Well, good evening, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I have seven o'clock, so we might as well get started. We hope to be the fastest council meeting of the year. I'm challenging everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that we rise from budgetary. If I do, it would be submitted to leaders. How appreciate it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll.
Arav, here. Perkins is absolutely excused. Hubert, here. Michelle's.
Present.
Schlaf.
Here.
Sanaferro.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Katie. And Verdorio is absolutely excused.
Thank you. Item C on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our work session on December 12th, as well as our city council meeting on December 12th.
I would approve those minutes.
By what? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you all. Why? Any comments? Yeah? I have one small thing.
I also have one small thing. I just have to leave Michelle off of the wall caller. Those are in attendance.
And I have the date of Paul's passing on Saturday night. It was over my head. So we could amend that. As far as my own side, as far as.
No, I'm sorry. I just.
Michelle needs to be added to.
Yeah, thank you.
And comments on this? Okay. When you're ready, please call the votes of your minutes. Or your approval minutes.
Michelle's.
Yes.
Arav, yes. Other, yes. Schlaf.
Yes.
Sanaferro.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no prearranged participation this evening. We're down to item E, approval of the agenda.
I would approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Senator. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Zach.
I'd like to pull the appointments off so that I can vote on them.
Okay. That will become new business and free entry. Any other changes? Okay, please call and vote. There are others in favor of approving the agenda since it's October 12th. Can I do that? What's that say?
I would only vote on.
Okay, Dan, please call and vote to approve the agenda. If there's one change.
Okay. Hubert, yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Sanaferro.
Yes.
Arav, yes. Schlaf.
Yeah.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Are there any declarations of consent on just a few minutes? Zach.
Bill of care, so money is going to my employer for work that another member of the firm provided. So I would be helping my car for that bill.
Okay. Okay, and G is a couple hearings. We have none. We're down to nonarranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Happy we have an audience. Justin, is there anyone online? I'm not seeing anybody.
There's none.
Okay. No, no nonarranged at this point. We have two communications in the back that are upcoming meeting lists and the 2022 community garden report. Is there any comments or questions on either? Why?
So I had my first here on the water council meeting, and I just want to say that it was remote. And I think we voted to continue to have them remote. But I will let you know, Justin, but just so you know, we are not meeting at that address as of right now.
Okay. Wait.
And it's not that time and date. I mean, it's that date, but it's not that time. It's in the morning.
Morning.
Yeah, I think it's going to be 10 o'clock or something. It was, I think, one noon or one this last time, but I'll let you know what shakes out.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on the interim meeting list or the community garden report? Seeing none, we're down to reports.
Our first report today is from Cliff Stewart, our public services secretary. How's everybody today?
Good, 10 minutes.
Good. How's the holidays?
Good.
So I get to report. If there's any questions, take them on. I'll get a couple ones after that.
Why?
I'm seeing the usual things on social media asking about the ice rink. It's just, we're just waiting for it to have enough ice.
Basically, yeah.
Hurry. I think that's what's been put out there, but just basically what I asked, because I haven't seen that question out there.
This week, it's next couple.
Yeah.
It's going to ruin itself. But I think Justin, they were talking about some type of, they're looking into this synthetic ice. Maybe just to get a price on it.
Okay.
Don't know anything about it.
Not really did on here, but this is my, my annual winter request is that we find some way to make sure we clean the crossings at the roundabouts or range for those that aren't in our jurisdiction. I drove by it earlier today. All the sign lines up with little, little islands. Things weren't clear.
Want to talk to her? Everybody doesn't know it.
Of course, yes, please.
Did you get a chance to watch or hear the minutes or read the minutes? I'm sorry for the mess. Okay, so it's about the farmer's market. Okay. Okay. That being said, the wall five, they did clean. Who took the motor and everything back with them, I didn't, they did. So they'll get those checked over. The ice service pump is also there, I imagine, probably by down about a month or so. Everything looked good when they came back and camera that it looked nice. I mean, just like it usually does. We're obviously keep going with our brush connection inspections. We did start reading all meters today for the city. So hopefully have that done by the end of the week. It's kind of tough if the industrial park is also more down. So usually it'd be next Tuesday and finish everything up.
Why are they down?
What is what? Why are they not working?
Yeah.
Dento. Destan. That's tough. They, and case based, they don't work this. For some reason, when they have to shorten like the three to eight weeks between the two, they, for some reason, they, they get their employees on. So I don't know if it's downtime and stuff, but we, we can't get access to it.
I see the blow.
Yeah.
I see. So we don't have remote readers on those particularly?
No. Yeah, so we have. I think there's four left in the industrial apartment, and we have one that we've had a problem with. The Dapo is going to be switched over. Hopefully it's coming March. No one there anymore. That one's actually more of a hazard than anything. You walk in a small room and you got eight inch water main pipe everywhere in the direction of the time. Climb, climb over. Water me just to get to be able to get to read. So, so this, these new meters, like I said, everything will be cellular, so we won't have that issue anymore. VFEs showed up for the wellhouse today. I'm hoping to have those get them installed by noon. It probably won't be this week. It'll probably be next week sometime. I did everybody have a date on that one that happens. I talked to Kurt this morning about this weekend. Everything went good. The new hire seemed to be doing all right too, so it's a good thing. I think that was it. No, that was it. Unless there's any additional questions?
Questions for Tim? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next up is Michelle. How are you, Michelle?
I'm fine. How was council this evening? Good. Good. Okay. So I don't really have any verbal updates for you. So do you have any questions for me regarding report?
I didn't have. Anyone else have?
I can contribute to it, sure.
We have the insurance report in the pack. Next on the agenda. Anybody have any comments on the show? Hey, Joe.
So for the next newsletter is that, I mean, we've been having things taken out of ours for many years. It happened in Westridge. I mean, I have a TV thing, you know, in Minneapolis. We have reports in turn farms that there was kids walking down the street flipping around handles and finding open cars. It just seems like that's something that's like, we gotta remind everybody once in a while, make sure that the cars should be on. Not the building.
Consider going with the team update too.
Yeah.
Any comments on the show for? Okay, down to the same area.
Sure. So I don't have a lot of verbal updates for you either. We submitted the spark rant for multi-car playground. We are working on the winter newsletter. Josh Self will speak, but yeah, we're hoping to get that out shortly after the first. We're also going to be opening up the temporary sculpture display at the time of year again. Where we'll start taking applications from sculptors to, to be part of that program. And through communication with WAI, looks like we're going to wait until the next meeting or until the second meeting in January to invite the football team to attend the next, to attend the council meeting and issue of proclamation. Yeah, that's about it.
Questions for Justin? Zach?
Well, I guess a question more for council. Do we extend invitation also to the field hockey team to attend and receive proclamation? They won the state title.
We have now, but not yet.
Why?
While we're at it, the debate team. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to make this more complicated than it is, but I, when Justin was saying that, I thought about that. I didn't think about that because I just, I don't think I was aware of it. But we, you know, we verbalized it last time, but they achieved what it beat. So.
Any other questions or comments for Justin? I don't have anything to add to my written report, other than to wish everybody a happy new year. To the board to climate excited 2023. Whatever you call it. Questions for me? And councilman will talk this evening. Okay, we're down to. Nope, Zach, sorry.
Wasn't asked during the committee reports, but CapDart canceled our last meeting because the person from Park was going to come handle surgeries. So we're probably just waiting for her to get back. So she'll be back again first Thursday in January. In person at Chelsea City Hall.
Okay. We're on the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Is there someone that will make a motion, please?
The move that we approved.
Well, I have to excuse myself first.
Oh, okay. That happens. I will make more.
The other thing is there's a couple back doors and.
Nope. With Zach now out of the room, I move we approve the now two items on the consent agenda. Bills and payroll in the amount of $319,150.33. And the proposal for DPW CDL turning current amount not to exceed $9,000.
My second.
Second. Moved by what? Second by Sana? Thank you. When you're ready, Pam, please call the vote to approve the two items on the consent agenda.
Arav, yes. Sanaferro.
Yes.
Hubert, yes. Schlaf.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carries. Five zero. Can we? Exactly. We have no unfinished business under item L. And we found a new business item M1. Consideration of renaming First Street Park to Paul Carson's Park. Zach, I'd like to make a motion to rename First Street Park to Paul Carson's Park. Motion for Sanaferro. Is there a second? Second. Thank you all. Any discussion? Zach.
Had this been discussed by, any further by Parks Recreation?
So it, it, it was discussed at the last meeting. And I, I, I didn't intend to, gosh, attended, but from what I heard of that meeting, it sounded like they were interested in taking some, some more time to evaluate what some other options might be to commemorate Paul.
And had there been any discussion about, he was also responsible for Mill Creek Park Trails. And there's also the trail that goes back by the school, which is where he had a bio lab when he was teaching. Had there been any discussion about looking at that? Is that something that the parks would look at?
So it, I mean, they, they could be topics of conversation at parks. As far as I am aware, there was not any, any conversation about that.
I'm. I prefer to wait until you give some more thought on that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Why?
I like this idea for a lot of reasons. One of them being that we always talk about this park, I mean, outside of Paul's involvement in, you know, developing this park and, and that we talk about highlighting this park. And I think this creates a really nice opportunity to start that conversation and start that actually, you know, to start that action moving forward. So I, I think it's, I think it's, I like it.
He certainly put a lot of energy into the vision for that park and to use that park as a Dexter Ringer. I mean, he's very much a promoter of that park, even though many people didn't know where it was.
Exactly. And that's, sorry, that's what I didn't say is that, you know, it provides us an opportunity if we approve this, if we had a dedication to really get the community out to see where it is and to see why he wanted it there and just bring awareness to it in a way that we haven't done before. And I think it would make him, sorry, I think, I mean, I don't know. I shouldn't put, I just, I, I feel like he would be happy seeing a huge number of people there, even if it's the first time.
Yeah. To me, Paul was so involved in many things in our community, so many parks, so many projects. But this park was the park and more than anything, anybody else, Paul worked on it. You know, Mill Creek Park or others, there were other people that were part of the projects of it. But Paul really spent time promoting this park and it's sort of his park. So to me, I'm fully supportive of renaming the, the park for Paul.
Is there more to add? Yeah. Okay, Dan, please call a motion to move renaming First Street Park to Paul Carson's Park.
Schlaf.
Yes.
Sanaferro.
Yes.
Michelle's.
No.
Arav, yes. Hubert, yes. Keel.
Yes. Motion carries. New business item M2 is consideration of winter tree trimming program proposal for Westridge from Berman's Preservices from Mount Natchez, Dead Cog. So motion.
Move we approve the tree trimming program proposal, not to.
Okay. Moved by Sanaferro?
My second.
If you seconded by Sana?
Zach. Could someone refresh me how we got into Westridge? I believe it was five years ago. We had some pretty aggressive trimming out there. I remember there are a number of neighbors who complained about it. I don't believe we've gone to similar level for the two or three area or the five where there's established streets that's mostly way till the storm takes it down. Could you explain how we got into one before we touch those other two again?
Yeah, so following Westridge and Dexter Crossley last year, Kurt and Michelle talked through what they were thinking that, that he needed the most next. And it was Kurt's recommendation that, you know, in just in his day to day direct through that it appears that the trees in Westridge are, are in the most need in the overall property.
Thank you.
Yeah. The, the trees out in Westridge are them pear trees and they've hit it, they've hit an age, a lot of them are.
So they should be trimmed to the ground is what you're saying?
That's pretty much where they're at. And I think that they're doing the best job they can do, but they've just gotten to that age. A little bit of wind or a little bit of snow, wet snow, the limbs just gone. And they're big enough now that they're, you know, covering the road.
Well, and the Bradford pear, they grow 20 years and then they fall down.
Basically what they're doing.
Well, there's probably a lot of residents that would want, or would be wanting to do a replacement. If they helped their initiative.
I think we have a program, right?
We do, we do have a customer program for, for the, the installation of new street trees. And then the replacement of those that.
Any comments related to the tree trimming services? Okay, please call a vote.
Hubert, yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Arav, yes. Schlaf.
Yes.
Sanaferro.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. To the motion carries. Thank you. And M3 is essentially K2 moved out appointments to boards and committees? If someone would like to make a motion. Joe?
Move we approve the appointments to the boards and committees in the package.
Is there a second?
A second?
Second. Well, thank you both. Need a session? Zach?
We still have a lot of vacancies on there. Do we have a plan to get those populated? Ask, because the, the arts, culture, heritage mentioned is a challenge for them doing their work.
Yeah, I have one other application, but the person is not a resident. And I've been interviewing other residents. But that one's.
We got one applicant for seven open spots.
I'm sorry, which one?
By my math, there are seven open spots. Then you, you don't have seated.
Correct. There's, there's no application for anybody for the economic dissolve corporation that I'm aware of. They're at selection committee. We've tried to reach out to, to people who are, they haven't asked to be on, they're past members to fill those voids. I don't have those, I don't believe there's a ZBA alternate. I don't believe there's an EBA application either.
But we, we, we are putting it in, have that in the upcoming newsletter.
So if any of you know people that are interested in anything. So we're going to talk to them. Any questions, comments? Okay, Miss Pam, please call and vote to approve the appointments.
Hubert, yes.
No, no, this is good.
Hubert, yes. Arav, yes. Michelle's.
Yes.
Schlaf.
Yes.
Sanaferro.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Council comments on this evening? Get in with Zach.
All right. So fun story about jumping the trunk when we had our, you don't have to put this in the minutes there. Our German exchange student, whenever we'd park the car at a parking lot or garage, we'd tell her, bring stuff with you. Put it in the trunk. It should roll eyes in a nice German way. And when her family was here, they did the trip. They ended up in Miami. The day before they're getting on the plane, their rental car is broken into and all her stuff was taken out. Her passport, her computer, everything she had from the entire year. So, yeah, jump in the trunk or bring it inside. Also, thank you to council for postponing work on the rules, reaction on the rules. That's something that's, has bothered me for a while. There's a lot of attention that those need, so thank you for waiting.
Why?
Well, you know, after holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. That's it.
Dan?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Years.
Sure. Just for the transparency, I got married on December 17th to that nice gentleman sitting over there. So from the next meeting, my last name will change as I visited both Secretary of State and Social Security office.
Today.
So Justin, I will touch base with you on that. Other than that, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Okay. We're back around a nonarranged participation? Is there anyone that would like to speak this evening? There's someone raising their hand. Awesome. Thank you. All right.
Okay, my name is Manu. I'm from Alexandria, Virginia. And my question is, have you been to the US Capitol to see the White House or the US Capitol Christmas tree? And have you seen the tour of the US Capitol building?
I personally have not seen that this year. Thank you for your presence this evening.
It's a big. And Joe Biden wishes all of you guys a Happy New Year. And I talked to Joe Biden recently. And he's, he told me that the US Capitol has a lot of facility. And, and he also said that there's a lot of art, art gallery. And a lot of art display at the US Capitol. And it's a, it's a fascinating place to see, like, I might go there tomorrow again to, 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 to see what's going on maybe after lunch. To see the tour of the US Capitol, get a nice holiday calendar 2023 or a nice booklet.
Thank you for your comments this evening. Thank you for joining us. Can you spell your name for us, please?
Okay, my name is Manu. Is M-A-N-U. My last name is Chopra.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak under non-arrangement? Okay, seeing none. I will seek a motion for agreement at 7:49.
I'll make the motion.
Moved by what? Second, second by Dan. All those in charge, 75, I say hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? Happy New Year, everybody.